Welcome to the Board wrap-up for March 2015. As we approach spring break for our Ponca City Public Schools, the Ponca City Board of Education held their March meeting. We've got Superintendent Dr. Pennington with us today. The Ponca City Board of Education, a very exciting time because not only is the final couple of months for school about to wrap things up this year, the Board of Education is going to be moving their offices from our current location, which is on West Grand, to the more traditional and beautiful East Grand location. And Dr. Pennington, I know that if Ponca City patrons want to see the new school board building, they have a chance to over the next couple of weeks.
On Sunday, March 15th, from 2:00 to 4:00, we're going to have the building open for tours. And we obviously would love people to come through. And we're doing it that Sunday for two reasons. The first one is, we're going to actually move in there on Monday. They're going to actually start moving this. And we wanted to do this before we had the building set up with furniture and all those kind of personal things that people put out on their desk and that kind of stuff. And really give folks an opportunity to go in and if they want to walk through every room, walk through every room without it full of furniture and that kind of stuff. You know, Phil, it really is going to be a great addition to the community. And I think there are a couple of things that make this positive for us. One is, is it gives us some necessary space. And you know, I go, when people walk through there and they see, well, these rooms are empty, well, I promise you, they're all going to be full of desks and cabinets and all those kinds of things here in the near future. But the other thing it did is allowed us to save a historical building. You know, we had a really, the Board really had a decision to make about four or five years ago, and that was, do we sell the building, which we knew that we would get nowhere close to its value for the building, or do we tear it down? I'm just not a big believer in leaving buildings standing that you know that you are not going to use. Now, if there's a chance, you know, that you might use it someday, then obviously you would do that. When, you know, when the district made the decision to move the ninth grade to the high school, it really ended, for any practical purposes, any student needs for that facility. And so I'm glad we were able to pass a bond issue to help get us started, and that we were able to save some building fund money for several years to allow us to go in and complete this building. You know, you never know when you get into the renovation of an old building, what's going to happen. It ended up costing a little bit more than we originally thought it would. But I really think that, and I've heard nothing but positive comments from the community. I mean, I've been very honored, I guess, because, you know, what I hear more than anything else is, is just an appreciation that we saved the building and that we found a use for it. And that, and I've been surprised at the number of people who remember when that was the administration building. Now, most, it's going to be interesting to see what happens Sunday, because the two questions that I, the number one question I get about that building is, is the tunnel still there? And people who grew up in Ponca City that went to East Middle School, that's, is the tunnel still there? And the second thing they want to know is, what did we do at the band room? You know, so it's, it's going to be interesting to see, you know, people will go in and obviously, I don't, I didn't have a historical connection with that building. I think I was in it maybe three times before we moved the alternative school out. But I've actually had some retired teachers that I've already taken through the building. And, you know, they, they remember being in Dr. Robinson's office when they were hired. You know, so it's, it's going to be a good thing for the community, and we're excited about the facility. And the best thing about it is, it opens up some space for us that we've desperately needed. We get to move child nutrition down here to this building. We're going to move our alternative school down here. And then we're going to go start a new centralized enrollment process where, rather than going to the building elementary schools to enroll, you'll actually come down to this office, and that's where you'll do your enrollment, which we think will streamline what we do, make it easier for parents. So there's lots of, there's lots of use for this facility still.
Sunday, the 15th, from 2:00 to 4:00, if you'd like to tour that new, old-new facility, and it does have a lot of historical value to many Ponca Cityans. Dr. Pennington, the last time we met, three weeks ago, we talked about Education Rally Day down at the State Capitol. There were a couple of unanswered questions, what would happen on the 30th of March, and the Board of Education made some decisions. I'm just going to let you talk about the education.
Well, we made the decision that we're going to participate in the rally, and we're going to participate by moving our May 8th snow day to March 30th. So that that will not be, that will not be a contract day for staff, and so that will allow our teachers to participate in the rally. And, you know, obviously, we hope that it's a common, we have parents and we have business leaders and we have other community members that will go to the Capitol on March 30th. You know, one of the things that responsibilities I've had this year, and we've talked about it before, is I've been president of the National of AASA, the School Superintendent Association. And so, and it's been our 150th anniversary. We actually happen to be the, there are only 50 membership organizations in the country that are older than AASA. And so this year, we've had a focus on celebrating public education, but just kind of a history. And so one of the things that I've spent a lot of time on this year is researching the history of public education. And, you know, we have public schools, not because somebody got up in a legislature somewhere and said, hey, I think we ought to have a study and we ought to have public education, and this is how it ought to work. We have public schools because between 1820 and 1850, all across the northern part of the United States, this didn't happen in the South, but across the northern and what we'd consider to be the Midwest, citizens went to the streets. And they held protest, and they rallied, and they had conventions, and they had marches. And just regular citizens pushed their legislatures very hard to pass legislation that brought forward public schools. Tax-supported, publicly-controlled and directed, non-sectarian schools. And so in a lot of, and of course, we didn't have to do that in Oklahoma, because when we became a state, that, those decisions had already been made, and we'd copied what other states did. But I think that we're at a crossroads in not only the history of our state, but we're also at a crossroads nationally. And it's going to take large groups of people going to their state capitals and exercising their rights as citizens to let their elected officials know how important public education is to them. We're in a crisis in Oklahoma. Our crisis is different than the crisis you find in other states, but it's happening nationwide, and a lot of it, most of it goes back to the 2008 recession. And the amount of education funding that was cut, that we didn't take the hit at that time because of the stimulus money that came from the federal government. It allowed us to kind of weather that initial storm and gave states a chance to recover and to be able to restore the funding to their, not only education, but other state We haven't done that in Oklahoma. We, even though we've had, since about 2010, we've had a growing state economy, we've had lots of growth in the oil industry, but for whatever reason, the powers that be decided not to reinvest that revenue in our public schools. They gave us a little, you know, they invested a little bit, but they sure didn't do enough to restore our schools to where we were. And remember, in 2008, we were still 48th in the country in what we spend per kid. We were still way below the national average on teacher salaries. So it wasn't like in 2008, we were in this great spot, but we were definitely a whole lot better off than we are right now. You know, just a few numbers that I think should give every Oklahoman pause. I mean, if you've, and I know, if you've got, if you've got kids or grandkids, and they're in schools in Oklahoma, and if you're a citizen and you care, and you're a business owner in this state, and you want to see, you know, the economy grow, and you want to see that you have great employees, and you have people ready to go to work for you, there are 1,000 teaching positions open in Oklahoma right now. And they're open because we can't find teachers. They're not open, and we're not talking about the jobs that were cut because of the recession. We're talking about, districts have cut positions, they have less positions than they've ever had, but now, we just have 1,000 jobs that we would love to put a certified teacher in, but we can't find anybody. They're not out there. They're not graduating from our colleges. And we cannot compete out of state. You know, we can't go, I can't send my personnel director to Missouri and go to the University of Missouri Teacher Career Day and set up a booth and say, hey, come to Oklahoma and teach, because I can't keep, compete with Missouri salary-wise. I can't do that in Arkansas. I can't do that in Kansas. I can't do that in New Mexico. I can't do that in Texas. Now, every one of those states can come here, and they can set a booth up in Stillwater in a couple of weeks, and they can talk to our graduates that our taxpayers have subsidized their education. And they can talk to them about, hey, come to Missouri and teach. And by the way, we're going to, you're going to make $2,000 a year more than you're going to make in Oklahoma. And the Texas people can sit there and say, we're going to pay you $7,000 more than you would if you take a job in Oklahoma. I mean, I mean, how, what would any of us do if somebody came by and offered us a $7,000 a year raise? You'd sure think about it. And if you're a college student who hadn't had a job yet, and you're, I mean, all college kids want to go somewhere else, right? So, I mean, they're just, they're just, they're just taking a lot of our best and brightest out of our state, and we have to at least be able to compete on a salary basis with teachers, with other states. And then you add on top of it, the rhetoric that came out of the State Capitol the last four years about teachers and that they weren't working hard, and they didn't do their job. And so we've just had a very toxic, toxic environment that has encouraged senior teachers to just retire early because they don't want to deal with the mandates and the assessment, the testing, and all the pressure. And then you've got young people either are not going into education, or if they do have an education degree, they're going out of state, or sometimes going into other jobs. And the oil industry, you know, has also hurt us, because we've had lots of teachers across the state who've gone to work for oil companies. Now, if that continues to decline, some of those people will come back, maybe. I mean, you don't know. They may decide to do other things. So we have to address that issue. We have 500 teachers across the state that are working on emergency certifications. So that means they're in, they're teaching in a classroom, other than what they went to college to do, or other than what they've tested in. We have some of those in our district. Three years ago, we didn't have anybody in Ponca City teaching on an emergency certificate. We just didn't do that, you know? But again, because of the teacher shortage, that's something that we've had to do in able, in order to put somebody in a classroom. You know, we're not like, you know, there are some industries that, if you have a position open and you can't fill it, you just, that's all right. You can still do your work as a corporation or a division of a company. It may make it a little bit hard on everybody else, but you can still, you can still do it until you find that right person. But we don't have that luxury. You know, we have classrooms with students in those classrooms, and we have to have a teacher in that classroom with those students. We have to do that. We can't put, we can't just cover it up. We can't, you know, we can't tell a first-grade teacher, hey, you're going to teach, you know, you're not going to, you're just going to teach your class and another class. We're going to take 80 kids, or, you know, 40 kids and take them to the gymnasium and do English, math, science, and social studies. It doesn't work that way. You know, we have to have people in those classrooms teaching those kids. So, I mean, it's, we really are at a crisis state, and I hope that we have a great turnout at the Capitol. It's difficult, because this is a year where there's not a whole lot, there's not any money. We know that we've got a $700 million shortfall. We're going to, we're going to take a cut probably in state funding next year. But it doesn't mean that the legislature can't make some long-term plans, that they can't set a vision out for Oklahoma that says, you know what, we, we are ready to invest in our schools, and we're a conservative state, we're not going to raise taxes, but within the structure we have of government and the structure we, and the tax structure we have, how do we get ourselves to where we are competitive with at least our region? I think they're smart people. I think they can do that. They have to be motivated to do that, because to do that for public education in our state, that means they've got to take some money away from somebody else. So whether that's because they reform, whether they decide to reform the tax credit system, where basically half the revenue that comes into state goes out the back door as tax credit to business and industry, whether they reform some of that, whether they cut the budgets of other state agencies, you know, I don't know how they're going to do it. I just know they have to do it, or we're going to find ourselves, in two years, we're going to find ourselves with 2,000 teaching positions open. And I don't, and that's not a good solution. I mean, it's, and, and we just can't, you know, we, I just think we have to take action, and it's got to be everybody. It can't just be teachers, and it can't just be parents. We need everybody, we need everybody who can be free on March 30th to go to the Capitol and join together with Oklahomans from across the state to tell, to go into the Capitol. Last year, we didn't go in the building, to go into the Capitol and meet with your senator, to meet with your representative, and sit down with them, and look at them right in the eye, and tell them how much of a priority education is for you. That it is the most important thing this state does. We have lots of important, we have lots of issues. We have lots of agencies that need more funding than they have. But if, if the legislature has to pick and choose, if somebody has to win and somebody has to lose, then education needs to be what wins. And they need to hear that, they need to hear that from teachers, from parents, from grandmothers, from business owners, from laborers, from every segment of Oklahoma society. They've got to hear that message loud and clear. Because right now, you know, they, they, they think there's no political price to pay for not supporting education. So we have to, we have to change that. The other thing we have to do is, we have to make it, we also have to send a very strong message that we don't want public money going to private schools. Right now, we have a piece of legislation, Senate Bill 609, that's currently on the Senate, waiting to, waiting action on, by the entire Senate. And this is a bill that will give a tax credit to somebody who sends their kids to private schools. Now, I mean, it just, it just, it just flies in the face of American tradition. And just because we've done something one way doesn't mean we have to do it that way forever. But you know, you just think about this for a minute. So the argument is, well, you know, these people have opted, they have a free, they have a public school down the street from them that is free for their use. They can send their children there, doesn't cost them, I mean, book, maybe, you know, yearbooks and that kind of stuff, but it's basically free. Okay? Or they have a choice to send their children to a private school to pay, and they have to pay tuition. Okay? Free, pay. You make a decision. Okay? And that's, and that's, that's American. That's when we, that's been a tradition in American education since its inception. But now, you've made a choice to send your child to a private school, and now, all of a sudden, we want to support that decision with a tax refund to you, or a tax break or tax credit. Again, it's just, it's just ridiculous. And, you know, you can argue all you want to about, well, this, I live in a neighborhood and the public school's not very good. Okay? You know, then you have an obligation to work with your school board, to work with your school, with your school building, work with your PTA, whatever you've got to do to make that school better. Again, you can go somewhere else if you want to, but you don't get to take money with you to go do that. But the argument is, well, these, you know, they, they're just going to take, for us, for this 12-year time period, they're going to take the dog, the money they spend for education, and they're going to take it somewhere else. We have, I've got, I don't have any children in the school system. I don't have any grandchildren in Oklahoma. Can I get a tax credit from the state of Oklahoma and send it to where my kids go to school in Missouri, where my grandkids are? Do I get to do that? Well, you know, you'd laugh me out of the room if I suggested that. But that's the same thing. You know, we, there's lots of things the public offers that we as individuals make choices whether or not we want to participate in. We have a great library in Ponca City, great public library. It's got wonderful books, tapes, all kinds of things there for you to go get for free. It's another American institution. You know, no, our libraries, we're the first in the world, where you can go for free, general public, and get stuff. But I choose to go, to buy my books. If I want to read a book, I don't want to go to the library and get it. I make a choice to buy it. Now, whether I buy it at Brays, whether I buy it at Barnes &amp; Noble, whether I buy it through Amazon, that's a choice I make. I have yet to see a piece of legislation that's going to give me a tax credit for the books I buy. I mean, it's the same thing. It's, people make a choice. And the other, and the other part of this that gets lost is that, when you say, well, we're going to let people get a tax credit for what they spend for the taxes they pay for public, for their child's education, you don't, the taxes you pay in the public ed, they don't, they don't pay for your child. You pay a lot more than your individual child cost. And I'll just give you this example. If you've got a family with an income of $80,000 a year, and they don't have any deductions, tax rate's 5%, that's $4,000 in state income tax they're going to pay. 32% of the state budget goes to common education. So 32% of $4,000 is, I think, is somewhere around $1,200. Okay? Well, that, okay, that's, so we'll give them $1,200 to go to private school, but you can't stop there. You have to divide that $1,200 by the number of students in the state of Oklahoma that attend public school, which is about $670,000, 670,000 students. Well, when you divide that by 670,000 kids, you end up with less than a penny. Less than a penny of that person who makes 80, that family with $80,000 a year, less than a penny a year of their tax dollars, if they have children in school, goes to support that child in school. Now, if they want a voucher for a penny, or a tax credit for a penny, I'll give them that. But why would we give money away that not only supports their child, but supports the other 670,000 students in the state of Oklahoma? It's just ridiculous. And the other part of this is, at the end of the day, it's going to divert $100 million of tax money. It's going to divert $100 million of tax revenue to private schools in the state of Oklahoma. It's not an inexpensive thing to do, and it just floors me that we're having that discussion today when we have a $700 million shortfall next year.
One question about the rally. What time's the rally, and is there going to be an organized group going from Ponca City, or are people going on their own?
We're not taking buses. My, the staff made it very clear to me last year that, and really, the parents that we talked to, we had, we had a few parents on the bus, but very few. Most of the parents who went wanted to go down on their own, and they made a day out of it. You know, they went down and they took, some of them took their children and, you know, went out to lunch and did some things. So I, I must, that's how we'll go this year. Obviously, if a group wants to get together and follow each other down, you know, we can do that. They're going to, in the morning, they've set aside in the morning from, from 8:00, 8:30 to 12:30 to be inside the Capitol, and then outside at 12:30 is when the rally will take place. So.
One, one note about the board meeting in March you wanted to talk about, and you kind of, you kind of lightened up when you, you talked about another security issue, but we don't often talk about things that are tabled at a board meeting, but the Board of Education has a security issue that you wanted to talk about that actually was tabled.
Well, we had an issue, we had a, about three weeks ago, I had a, came across a product that, and it's hard to describe, but just, but if you just think about it, it's a metal box that, that inside of it, it has a strobe flashlight, a can of mace, it has a yellow vest for somebody to put on a whistle, it has a bag of quick clot. And, and it goes inside a classroom. You know, the, the big challenge has been in the school, in school security is, you know, what happens when that intruder gets inside the building? What do you do? We've had people that have wanted, want teachers to carry guns. Well, we're not going to do that. We've had people who have suggested that you have a soup can in your room, and when the guy comes in the door, you throw it at him. There have been other things that have been proposed, but they've all just been, you know, when you look at them, you just think, that's not going to be very effective. And so we, we came across a product that, that we vetted a couple of weeks ago, and we brought to the board last night, that we felt like, that obviously I felt like, was a, was a, was a, solved that problem, which is what happens when that person is in the building, when you've got that armed intruder, or that armed student, whoever it is, that's in the building, and they are intent on doing harm, and maybe they're even doing harm. And so, so basically, what this system does, it puts a box in every classroom. That box is wired so that, when you have that situation, the teacher scans their finger across the top of the box, it opens up, and that immediately notifies the people that you want to have notified. The police department, district administration, school board members, other teachers within the building and district, and it tells them where the intruder is and what room he's in. And then it provides the teacher with a couple of items that are not intended to do anything other than to distract or subdue the intruder. The first one is a strobe flashlight, which, which I've seen it now three or four times. And, and what those strobes do is, when you hit somebody with that strobe, it disorients them. Now, it doesn't disorient them forever, you know, but it, but it does distract, and it does draw your attention. And, you know, sometimes in those situations, you're just hoping for seconds to, to, to get the person distracted. And then it has a can, a can of gel mace, which, which, you know, sometimes, you know, people have got mace, they carry it on their key ring, and it sprays a big white area. This just sprays the gel, and so you, you know, it hits the intruder in the face, which is, again, is going to bring them down, is, is going to, you know, allow you to get kids out of the room, or whatever it is you need to do. There's some other things that maybe, you know, in the right situation would allow you to subdue that person. Obviously, it involves, it requires the teacher to do those things, so you have to train your teaching staff. So we had a lively discussion last night, and, and the board decided to table it. They want some additional information. And I think that the things they asked for were wise things to ask for. The first one was, well, our, we had a kind of robust discussion about whether teachers would ever use this. You know, if they were in that crisis situation, would they, would they use the material that was available? You know, obviously, you can never answer that question with 100% certainty. You know, people will sit in a meeting and tell you, yes, I would do that, and when the crisis comes, they wouldn't. People who tell you they would not use it may be the ones that do use it, you know? But, but again, I think it's wise to go ahead and, and, and talk to our teachers a little bit more about what we saw. And then the other issue, the other thing they've asked us to do is to vet that through our state's Homeland Security Department, which now is in charge of safety for schools. You know, we did bring Chief Bohan in and had to give him an opportunity to look at the product, and we, we got his opinion on it, which was a very, you know, obviously, he's not going to tell the school board how to spend their money. That's not his responsibility. But, you know, he was supportive. He saw the benefit of having that product. So, you know, we're going to go from here. We'll see what happens. You know, it's expensive, and I think that's a thing that, you know, is, is, is one thing that gave the board pause. You know, we're, we're talking about to put one of these boxes in every classroom. You're talking about spending $200,000. And that's a tough call, because it is something that you may And that's a tough call because it, it is something that you may never use. I mean, you hope you never use it. You know, you hope that you would never, in, you would never have to do that. And so, you know, you, you stand the chance of taking a lot of criticism for spending money. I mean, it'd be easy for a citizen to say, well, why'd you buy those stupid boxes? They're only, you know, all they do is sit there in the room. And that's absolutely right. That's all they do is sit there in the room. Until, and you fill in the blank. Until you have, and then somebody who comes in and fires shots in your building, until you have a tornado that comes through and students are hurt and, you know, they're, they're injured badly and you need to stop the bleeding. You know, there's just lots of scenarios where, when disaster strikes, when that worst-case scenario happens, the thing we hope never happens, happens, then you're better prepared than you are today. And those are hard things to, I mean, I, that's a tough deal, you know? But so, the board's asked us and so we're going to bring some, we're going to find a way to engage teachers and give them a chance to, to know more about the product and, and exactly how it works. And, and again, you know, how you know whether somebody's going to really use it or not is a, is a, is a, you just don't ever know that. And then the other thing is to get our Homeland Security people to look at it. And, you know, we may end up instead of putting one in every classroom, we may put one in every three or every two. You know, I'm not sure how you decide which, which of those classrooms are. You know, the easy thing to do is to put one in every classroom. That way, everybody's covered. So, you know, we'll go from there. And I think the, the important thing about that is, and, and the reason I wanted to talk about it, you know, sometimes the public thinks that the school boards are rubber stamp. You know, that all they do, I hear that sometimes, well, all that board does is whatever you want them to do. You know, there are some times when they don't follow my recommendations. And yesterday, last night was one of those times. And I think that just hopefully serves as a reminder to the people who watch this, these folks are not puppets. You know, anybody that thinks that, that Dr. Pennington has some strings and our board members dance to those strings. Last night's discussion should end any thought that that's exact, that's, that's the way things work. We try to do a good job as an administration of making sure our board is informed. We try to make a, make sure that they know exactly what it is that we're talking about and that when we bring proposals to them, that they know enough about it that, that their questions are answered and that we've resolved any differences before we get to that point. And, but again, last night, our board members, I think, again, very wisely decided to put a decision off until we had more information.
Dr. Pennington, have a great spring break. We wish all of our students and teachers a good spring break as well as we wind down 2014-15 calendar school year and the March Board of Education wrap-up. For Dr. Pennington and Chris Adams behind the camera, I'm Phil Turney.